In public schools, Dr. Brummett, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. I am going to put up a our point so we can go forward to the page. I just wanted to start off the meeting with, I didn't get any questions really from the board, except for one board member about computers in between the two meetings. But what I did want to do is start the meeting off tonight with a response to, I recently received an inquiry from the town manager about her pupil expenditures and why Newington is on the, is higher than our, some of our neighboring communities such as Rocky Hill and Weathersfield. So Lou and I embarked on a very significant investigation into that, which included meeting with the State Department of Education Chief Financial Officer. We met with a consultant at the state who's, you know, very knowledgeable about finances, school finances, Kathy Gay. We also talked to, I spoke with both the superintendent in Rocky Hill and in Weathersfield, and then Lou spoke to the business side of folks in those two respective towns. And there are some extremely compelling reasons why our per pupil expenditures are a lot higher than both those on paper, but there's a lot of behind the scenes where it's not an apples to apples comparison. And just to remind the board, you know, I've been in the district two years and the two budgets that I have had averaged about 1.03% increase. So there really hasn't been a big increase on the board's side of finances. So that is important now. And then before I turn it over to Lou, I just wanted to comment about some of the cost-saving measures that the board has engaged in, in recent years, both right before I arrived and during my tenure, that kind of explain, you know, everything we've been trying to do to keep our costs as low as possible. So just, just briefly, our special ed costs have been relatively stable. We've used the Effective School Solutions Program, which has helped us retain kids in school or in district, which saves a lot of money. We had three teachers access the early retirement plan last year, which netted us about 150,000 in savings in this year's budget. We are hoping to offer the ERIP this year, but obviously those savings are yet to be determined. We will have at least one retiree this year who we will not replace, which we believe will save us about $100,000. We worked collaboratively with the town to develop the pre-K tuition offset, and that allows us to apply about $130,000 in tuition to our operating budget each year, which helps to reduce the cost of our pre-K program. We recently renegotiated our copier contract, which saved us an additional, at a much lower price, 18,300 per year for two additional years. So it's a huge savings. When I arrived, there was a vacancy in a communication position that I did not fill, and that was about a $60,000 position. Currently, we have a vacancy in our tech department. That's the folks that come out and fix computers and help us with our technology. We did not replace that position, and we are reassigning some of those responsibilities. And right before I arrived, they cut a central office administrator, and we have never replaced that administrator, which certainly has caused our office, you know, myself, Wendy and the curriculum office and Steve to pick up more responsibilities. So those are the cost-saving measures that we have done over the last two years, and certainly years prior, there were others, but I'm just focusing in on the last two years. And now I'm going to ask Lou to very, very briefly tell us about his analysis between why the per pupil cost is such a, there's such a differential between us and Weathersfield. And just for the sake of comparison, if you look at the three communities, Weathersfield and Newington are the most comparable. They're very similar to us, slightly smaller school district, slightly smaller community, but very similar demographics. Rocky Hill is a much smaller district, and the demographics aren't as close to us as Weathersfield. And anecdotally, I spoke to the superintendent in Weathersfield today at a meeting, and he said that Weathersfield has always had the lowest or one of the lowest per pupil expenditures in the whole DURG. But that being said, Lou, I'm going to kick it over to you for that, you know, very brief explanation of the per pupil cost question.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. The question that was posed to us by the town manager, you know, asked why and what are the differences? So the very first item is going back to, are all the elements, community by community, really apples to apples with each other? And this has been a question that's come up every few years, going back, you know, 20 years or so, where people find this a question of interest, and by all means, having us be able to articulate responsible and accurate information is extremely important. And one of the first things to know is when the article was in the current back on January 28th, the numbers that were published had certain caveats to them, where there were exclusions to the, what was included in the cost, and those included certain cafeteria operations costs, debt service, and construction costs that were excluded from the, how they put that number together. So, and you would ask, why is that really a material item? Starting seven or eight years ago, three of our surrounding communities had to engage in a comprehensive renovate as new for their high schools, which ran anywhere from 50 to 80 million dollars per town, as well as over in Rocky Hill now, they've built a brand-new elementary school. And those were done relying substantially on bonding capacity of the town. So the question is, well, why is that really a big deal? Well, all of our ongoing maintenance for buildings are in our operating budget. We pay as we go every year to fix a roof, replace an air conditioning system, whatever those aspects of work are, where in our neighboring communities, they basically had a, let's start all over again and rebuild as new, which is very similar to what we're doing at Anna Reynolds. You know, they're basically taking the building down to its bones and then rebuilding something that will have longevity for the community for anywhere from 30 to 50 years. So, you know, bonding is a completely appropriate strategy for that. In Newington, we've always had an approach where they were always very conservative about bonding debt. And at the time of this analysis for the 1920s school year, the total debt outstanding in Newington was just slightly over a million dollars. And that compared to 46 million dollars for Weathersfield and about 44 million dollars in Rocky Hill. So you can see, you know, we're, yes, just a sliver of what their bonding costs are. So when you take the amount of money they had to pay every year for the debt service, you know, paying back the principal on your mortgage, as well as the interest on it, the impact in Weathersfield was actually 1,201 dollars per student. That is not reflected in that calculation. So immediately, it closes the gap almost entirely between our expenses and their expenses, because there is, we're basically spending virtually, I believe it's 71 dollars a student in bonded debt in finishing off the last of our 2005 bills. And then when we go over to the future, Weathersfield and Rocky Hill have substantial bonding issues hanging over their head, which impact this calculation. And that should be the page we start with as far as the analysis. Apologies for it being sideways right at the moment. But in reading it, the impact on Weathersfield is 1,201 dollars, on Newington it's 71 dollars, and on Rocky Hill it's 593 dollars. So that brings Weathersfield's number almost up to 18,000. We're a little bit over 18,000, and Rocky Hill's at just under 17,000 with that one change in assumptions. So if the formula presented by the state included the debt service and the bonding that's in place to pay for the school renovations, the playing field equalized almost instantaneously. Beyond that, we have three other measures that were identified that, you know, impact this substantially, and I'm talking about it's more than 30, 40, 50 dollars a student when you factor it into the calculation. In Newington, we have a town ordinance for how we handle certain receipts for tuition and building use, where all those dollars have to go to the Board of Ed CIP account. So they are not counted against your current expenditures. That is not the case in Weathersfield and Rocky Hill. Those receipts go immediately against their current year budget, which will then reduce what their net costs are presented on this report. For us here in Newington, it was about 500, 675,000, I believe was the number. Yeah, 675,000 of receipts that were directed to the board CIP account instead of being taken as a credit to the operating budget. That impact was 160 dollars toward the per pupil costs when you started analyzing and making things apples to apples. So we had a small add on our, our bonding cost and a decent-sized reduction in our, because our ordinance restricts us in what we can do, where Rocky Hill had a significant increase because of the bonding, and Weathersfield's was, you know, tremendously higher. You can see in the upper part that the multiplier of their debt service compared to what we're paying in Newington is almost 16 times that. And in Rocky Hill, it's only about six times what Newington bonds. So it speaks very well of the town's strategy of minimizing their bonding that's out there in committing future generations to long-term debt and gives them more flexibility down the road. And it's, this has served the town very well. But again, it's a statistic that doesn't have all the elements in it to provide a true apples to apples for what's going on. So, and then beyond these two, we had two programmatic differences of substance between the other communities. One of those being the two STEM academies at the middle schools, where we run those as a school within a school arrangement, where, you know, we have a modest staff that's there with their salaries and their benefit costs, along with about $20,000 of supplies to run the programs each year. And then we have the specialized transportation support so that a student in the John Wallace district can attend the Martin Kellogg STEM Academy if desired and vice versa. So we've got special transportation arrangements to support that. So those costs either come out of our number or get added to both of the other two districts' numbers. Since I really don't know what the number would be for the other guys, it would just be a deduct on us to basically make it equivalent that none of us have a STEM academy across the board. So with that, Weathersfield is at 17,956. We're at 17,928, and Rocky Hill's at 16,952. And then the last major one is the ESS program that was mentioned earlier by Dr. Brummett for the health and wellness for our high school students that year. We were, our high school was the only one of the three communities that had this program, and that cost is 277,000 divided over our student population. So to balance it where everybody is on an even footing, that had a positive impact on our calculation of 66 dollars per. So taking these four major elements into play, Weathersfield was 17,956, we're 17,863, and Rocky Hill 16,952. So, you know, based on just these four characteristics, we're just neck and neck with, Weathersfield is a true per pupil expenditure, and Rocky Hill is a bit ahead of us, you know, 5%. But they're not exactly the same as we are for community characteristics. They have much lower upplacement tuition costs that they have to deal with. So there are other factors we didn't try to really dissect at this point. When we kind of get into this, a couple of points, plus or minus from where Newington is, the analysis would take a tremendous amount of detailed insight in working with the other communities to really be able to articulate the smaller, more specific adjustments to create perfect apples to apples across the board. You know, in getting to this point, trying to address the substance of the issue was really important. And I believe these four things are easy to wrap your hands around. They're either, you know, published in the state reporting for the debt service. They are part of our town charter for how we have to handle revenues. And board action was taken for the ESS program and the academies several years ago, that everything is all part of our reasonable and appropriate expenses every year, even though they end up being higher than our neighbors that are here. You know, there are also the nuances of the community condition that play in here. The free and reduced lunch percentage in Newington is about 33% of our students. The next highest was about 25% of our peers. And that's an indicator of the general economic strength and the family earning power in Newington and everybody's well-being. So that, you know, typically has, you know, other threads that go with it, which, you know, require us to supplement our programs in different areas to address whatever issues get, come to school every day for us. So with that, you know, just asking, Dr. Brummett, has any other comments you'd like to add to that?
No, I appreciate that, Lou, and I really want to thank you for, in a very short amount of time since that email came in, we did a lot of fact-finding, but you did the yeoman's work of it. But just to summarize, the debt service, the, the application of our tuition reimbursement, our special reimbursement from Hartford, the programmatic differences, the major programmatic differences, as well as, you know, we didn't get into a lot of depth about the free and reduced lunch impact, but I can tell you we're getting more title monies because of that. So there are impacts when you become, the higher you go with your free and reduced lunch. So all of those, really, when you take them out of that factor, are really showing that our difference with Weathersfield is not at all significant. And I will say, the State Department too, when we let them know that this was becoming more of a concern budget-wise, they said, that's not the purpose of per pupil expenditure, publications. They're really meant to determine how districts are reimbursed for excess costs and for other indicators. They, they really aren't meant to be like a statement of whether you're budgeting tightly or loosely or what have you. Not to say that, that it hasn't come up in other communities as well. But anyway, I'll turn it over to Dr. Fletcher to see if there's any questions from the board.
Yes, Danielle Droste.
Can we get that PDF sent to us so that we can, that was again, a lot, like our previous meeting, it's really hard to see it on our screens to really see what you were presenting, so it would be super if we could have that.
Absolutely. We'll send it out tonight.
All right, thank you. And Jessica Weaver.
Just a follow-up question. Was the special ed included in that as well? I just know, we always talk about it being one of our biggest drivers, and obviously, we've seen that percentage dramatically increase along with our free and reduced lunch students. So I'm just wondering, in terms of variations, in terms of our special ed students, obviously, it's a case-by-case basis, depending on which student needs which needs, but how there is any variation between towns on that?
The answer is yes. Okay.
Yeah, we looked at that, and we didn't see between the three towns a substantial difference there. But next year, again, this is last year's numbers, this year's special ed numbers have gone up by 2%. That can be attributable to our influx of new open choice students. But next year, if we were to look at this again, it might be a different story. But that, the year that we're talking about, our special ed numbers between the three districts were equivalent, are very similar.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Amy Pirati.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I just wanted to comment, I think that, thank you, Lou and Maureen, or Dr. Brummett and everyone who had a part in doing this work. I think it goes to show that you can't just look at a single number and tell, you know, Newington's spending too much money, because a lot of the things that we, you know, you highlighted, the, the programs that we have, the academies, I think it makes Newington more attractive for families to come to. So just because we're on paper spending more per pupil, we have a lot of programs, there's a lot of, you know, good things that we're offering. So I just wanted to thank you for putting this together, and I look forward to looking at it in more detail. I think it really says a lot. Thank you.
Very good. I don't think we have any more questions, Dr. Brummett, so.
Thank you. I'm just gonna appreciate that. Now we're going to get into the heart of the meeting tonight.
Can I add something before we do that? What I would like to do is please hold your questions until the end of the presentations, and then we will give you an opportunity to ask questions with each department, okay? All right, thank you.
So I want to just show the board, we, through the assistance of my esteemed colleagues in central office, Jay Slernow and Kristen Freeman and Wendy, the presentations have been reordered tonight, so they have a better flow. And so we're going to start off with Seth Korn, and he's going to do art as well as school counseling, though that isn't exactly the order of the agenda. I ran this by the chair and vice chair, and they were comfortable with the reordering. I think you'll find a better flow, and it's going to be the same person speaking to the departments for which they oversee. So I will now turn it over to Seth Korn. And we've asked our administrative team to really focus on any significant changes that have been made to their budget and only provide a brief overview. So, long story short, you know, that's the point of this. All right, so I will turn it over to Mr. Korn. I do see Anastasia's comment, but I, there's not going to be anything else posted tonight. It's going to be Mr. Korn and others presenting and referring folks to the budget book. All right, it's all yours, Mr. Korn.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So they picked me first because I get to set the bar. So nice to see everybody and welcome to new board members. My name is Seth Korn, and I'm the Director of School Counseling and Student Testing for Newington Public Schools. So I'm first going to start with art. So if you have your lovely binder that we get every year, it is going to be the first green tab labeled art. And looking at it, I'm going to go to the back page of the first page, where is our, we call it our left-hand side page. And I'm just going to give a brief description of our art program for Newington Public Schools. So the art program is offered to all students at Newington Public Schools. It allows students to have exposure in various types of media, such as clay, painting, drawing, digital graphics, and design, to name a few. At the high school, the program offers a variety of courses to meet the needs of a diverse student population. Among some of those courses, we offer a portfolio preparation and an AP studio art class. So to give a brief budget run-through, so now looking towards the right side, for the 2022 and 2023 school year, the art department program is requesting an amount similar to last year. You'll see the increase mostly in our supplies, so line 600s, and those are typically our consumable goods. So that's why you probably see, and with price increases and the amount that we've had to use over the past year, that is why you will see a slight increase in that line item. And with that, I will turn over to Dr. Fletcher.
Okay. Do we have any questions related to the art program? Ms. Droste?
Actually, I think my question is probably overall with the budget. On the right-hand side, next to certified salaries under 100, it says certified salaries 111, oh two. Can you tell me what those mean? Like, what are they, like, what, so if, like, it says contracted staff, I understand that hourly staff, I understand. And then underneath it, it says 100 salaries. I assume those are salaries. It said certified salaries, and then in parentheses, 111, parentheses, oh two. What do those numbers refer to?
So Lou, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but if I am correct in this, I believe those refer to what school? Those numbers, every school is labeled a number.
So if Lou or Karen is on the line, for example, two would be what school?
So two is E. Green, four is Anna Reynolds, five is Ruth Chafee, six is John Patterson, 10 is Martin Kellogg, 11 is John Wallace, 20 is Newington High School, and 30 is the district code.
Okay.
We can get you those, if you need those.
A key?
A key code, yeah.
Thanks, Karen. And for district, if you wouldn't mind explaining that, Karen, is that refers to district-wide employees?
District-wide employees are district-wide expenditure that would be used across all of the schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I actually appreciate that question, Ms. Droste, because it helped folks orientate to what all this means. I don't know if there's any other questions about the page layout. Would anyone appreciate a little bit more of an explanation of appropriated superintendent request? The codes at the top of the page versus on the side? Would anyone appreciate any type of explanation there?
Ms. Pirati?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be wonderful to get, just an orientation of this page.
Karen, can I ask you to do that? If you could just provide us with an overview of what, because the pages are all similar. They just changed by department category. Could you review what the page layout tells people?
So at the top of the page, you'll see appropriated 2021, 2022. That is our current year budget. The initial request, 2022 to 2023, is the initial request from all staff, what they originally put into the budget. Program requested 2022, 2023 is the supervisors at the supervisor level. Supervisors went in, looked at the materials that were wanting to be purchased for next year, and made appropriate changes as necessary. And the superintendent request 2022, 2023 is at Dr. Brummett's level.
Okay. Does that help you understand, Ms. Pirati?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Droste?
Still trying to get my head around this after, you know, I had the same concern last time I was on. So I'm looking at administrative salaries, and so it's a point one position. I understand that. And then it says administrative salaries. So am I reading this right? That 20 would be from the high school, 30 would be from the district. So this person is making, and I'm estimating, 18,000 dollars, oh no, I see it, or 18,399 dollars. Is that the same person? Or is that two different people because it's two different line items?
Karen or Lou, I know it was certified, that's kind of your end.
Different staff. So 20 is the supervisor at the high school, and 30 would be the district supervisors from central office.
And that's a portion of the district supervisor. So who is the district supervisor who has art as part of their responsibilities?
So in the 20, that would be Mr. Korn.
And that's why he's giving the presentation.
And 30, I just have to look it up. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's Amanda Fiole at the high school program leader, unless it's something else.
So that would be a portion of Wendy's salary.
Oh, Wendy's.
All right, does that answer the question? If so, we want to, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. And I think maybe it's helpful to also kind of go over that some salaries are split up, not like in one section versus the other, and how they're not duplicative, because I know that was one of my hard things to wrap my head around on the first one. But I guess just my question too regarding that and how this is then, again, I know the public can't see necessarily what we're looking at, but this is, you know, there are certain lines. And I noticed that in the certified positions, it says nine full positions, and there are seven lines under the salaries. So I didn't know if those are in other portions of the, again, is it split like, like SASS position? Or is it, yeah, just my question about that, if that could help, if that makes sense to anyone.
Yes. Karen, can you elaborate on how those salaries are allocated?
I can do it. I have that right in front of me.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou.
At the elementary level, the teachers have somewhere between a point six and a point eight assignment across. across the four schools, depending on the enrollment and how much they have to support. Middle schools each have a full-time arts teacher that's there. And there are three full-time teachers at the high school.
Okay, so that line I just wanted to reiterate, the last line is three positions.
Three at the high school, two middle schools. And then the other four positions are split between the elementary schools, but they're not exactly the same because of enrollment differentiation between the schools.
Understood. I just wanted to clarify that. That last line item is three different teachers, but in the next line, the administrative salaries, those are two different people. So there are three salaries within one, the last line item. Correct.
So these questions have been very helpful to help illuminate how these pages are to be interpreted in terms of they are spread out over district, they are spread out over schools. And they show last year's versus this year's. And I appreciate the questions that have come in because they do help to clarify it.
Okay, I see no other hands, so we can move on to the next one.
Mr. Korn?
So I'm going to the third tab in your binder, or the third blue tab in your binder. And again, I'm going to first start with the back of the first page, which is our left-hand side page. Give a brief overview of school counseling. And I would be remiss if I didn't say Happy National School Counseling Week to our school counselors out there in the district. So a little description of our program. So the mission of the school counseling department is to deliver a comprehensive school counseling program that provides all students with opportunities to gain an understanding of self and others. The Newington Comprehensive School Counseling Program is aligned with state framework and our national standards. Our state legislation requires school counselors to work with all students in grade six through 12 to develop an individual student success plan that concentrates into three domains of academic career and personal social. And Newton, in our district, we actually concentrate also in fifth grade as well, since our middle school has fifth graders. To give a brief budget run-through for the 2022 and 23 school year. The school counseling department is requesting similar amount as to last year. The increases you'll see is increase in memberships and also in our contracted services. So NAVYANT, which is our major program we use with our students across all grades five through eight. Every year it goes up about a 10%. And it will be interesting, at least for the following year, since Power School and NAVYANT are now one. It may look a little bit different, not next year, but year following if they end up combining the cost of those programs, since it is now technically one organization. So with that, I will again turn it over to Dr. Fletcher.
Okay, very good. Do we have any questions from board members? Very good presentation, very clear, no questions. All right, Dr. Brummett.
Thank you, Mr. Korn, and we'll be honoring school counselors at an upcoming board meeting.
Oh, we do have a question from Ms. Rose.
What is, sorry, I'm reading it and I'm like making my questions and I was adding and I was writing and it's too much at once. What is the non-certified position? Because that's a, that's a pretty, it's like 60 something thousand dollars. What is that for?
Karen or Lou, I'm going to turn this over to you, but I'm assuming that is for.
There's a one secretary assigned to the department of the high school.
I'm sorry, repeat that, Lou?
There's one secretary who was assigned to the counseling department at the high school.
Okay, so this is the salary of the secretary.
Right.
Correct. All right. I think, do you see any other, I do not see any other questions, Dr. Fletcher, wait.
Oh, Miss Yop?
The line item that says administrative salaries for 128,573 for the high school is that it's number 118? Is that a combination of many people or is that one person?
That's one, that's one person.
Who is that? What's their position? It says 128,573?
For the director of counseling.
Okay. And that's the high school, right? Because that's number 20?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Weaver?
If I could just add that Mr. Korn oversees both high school and middle school counselors.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know.
Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Just a guess in that, what are we cutting from the second administrative line item, administrative services? That's cutting $8,000? Or is that just being moved?
That might be a Karen question.
Because it's district?
Yep. I can't identify that right at the moment. I don't have last year's to look at, see what the comparison is. We have to follow up with a response later on this.
No worries.
Somebody might be classified to the wrong program for that similar amount where it's a plus and a minus equals zero.
Got you. If you think about 8,000, good job.
All right.
Okay, no more questions?
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Korn. We'll see you soon. All right, we are now going to segue over to education technology. I believe we have Jay Salerno on the line and Craig Holland. Just a point of clarification, this is going to specifically address educational technology in the board operating budget. We covered all the computers and other structures during our discussions for the capital. So this is strictly operating budget. Mr. Salerno and Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Maureen. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Craig and I, it's our pleasure to present you the 22, 23 Educational Technology Budget. Before we proceed to the actual request, I'd like to highlight some of our goals and program needs based on the left-hand page. Since 2015, MPS has been an exemplar district for technology integration, both locally and nationally. And we continue to strive for excellence moving forward. Some of our major goals include, but are not limited to, providing the necessary supports to ensure digital equity for all of our students. Provide a variety of engaging and development, developmentally appropriate embedded technology learning experiences. And new for 22, 23 is to improve communications to better support the variety of languages spoken in the homes of our students and community families. Program improvements would be a device refresh for three grade levels of one-to-one devices for grades K, five and nine. Funding for this is currently, as Dr. Brummett said, resides in our board CIP account. And moving forward, a need would be is to maintain this replacement cycle to ensure academic and instructional success. If you look at our program requests, we are down 51,000. Although we have, our total salaries have increased and our total other purchases, service spending have increased. They've been offset by our, both our supplies and our total equipment and property. So with that being said, if there are any questions, please send them our way.
Okay, Miss Yop?
I just have a question, if I may, for John. You said something about a device refresh. Sorry, you spoke so fast, so I couldn't catch that. For grades five, nine, and I couldn't hear.
It is K, five and nine. That would be our yearly device refresh for Chromebooks.
Okay, thank you.
And you did state that comes out of the board CIP, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's been reallocated from operating and we've moved it through a recent board meeting to CIP. And I think fractions maybe in health benefits.
Yeah, I wanted to have that reiterated for the sake of everyone to hear that. Miss Yop?
To my question, Dr. Fletcher is to Craig. You said that's been reallocated and it's going to come from health, the health benefits account? Is that what you said?
CIP, Board CIP. I may have misspoke with health benefits. We have used some health benefits in the past. The board adopted a new CIP program, which now encompasses the capital for Chromebooks for students. Actually, all of our device purchases for this fiscal year have been moved into that plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? And Ms. Weaver?
Quick question, this is just a little technical. What is the Microsoft Office Certification Practice Test?
You can speak to that. So at our high school, we have a Microsoft Office Certification Program. So that they're taking classes to become Microsoft Office Certified, industry standard. So they're leaving Newington Public Schools with an industry standard certification.
Is that, so that's from Microsoft or is it from like?
Yes, directly from Microsoft.
Recognized by Microsoft, yeah.
Included like Word, Excel, I'm sorry to get in the way, I'm just curious. That's a good.
Exactly, just because Word, Excel, PowerPoint.
I just want to know who needs to be certified and why.
No, so the classes cover the Word, PowerPoint and Excel for all the kids. And then if the students want to move on to other things, they have the opportunity to do so also. So certification course covers all the basics. If they want to become certified and that's industry standard, so they can enter the workforce right away if they needed to.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Parati?
Thank you. I'm just curious, in the supplies, the budget last year was very miniscule. I know you mentioned that the supplies went up, but can you just explain? It says headphones and cables. Can you explain why there's, there was nothing last year or hardly anything last year and the number is so high this year? Requested?
Amy, I think the supplies actually went, or the request this year is actually going down from last year. It was a $31,000 budget last year and change, and this year's request is a bit lower. I think there's been a lot less wear and tear on some of that equipment. I believe, Jay, you could probably speak to any other specifics, but it's primarily headphones and instructional classes.
$20,000.
Okay, so I was looking at the first page only, I apologize for that. It was, I guess, supplies for, I'm not sure, maybe it was broken out differently. Because on the first page at the bottom, it says each of the schools was very minimal. And then this year, there's a larger amount requested. So I guess it was maybe specifically for the schools.
The details, you're probably looking at the details. You might find it easier just for a quick overview to turn to the other, the first side of the left-hand page. Very first page of the program has a summary for you with each of the different codes. And that's where we, you can quite easily see the appropriation from the fiscal year present. The program requests, superintendent's request to you at this point, as Karen introduced earlier as well. Does that help?
I see the bottom line total is similar or went down. Yes, I guess I'm just, it's okay, I'm good, thank you.
There's a lot of pages, I know. If it's new, there's a lot of pages. And it's nice to see the summary and then there's backup behind it for you as you continue to turn through the pages.
Okay, Miss Yop?
On the third page, it says administrative salary 118. I guess 30 would be the district, who is that? And the non-certified salary 19, I don't know what the code means or referring to.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the whole request?
On the third page, first, second, third, it says administrative salary. And then it says 118, number 30, it says 179,657.
Correct, the.
So I'm just, when I open the book, I'm not, on the front, back and then be the next page. Where it says.
Right, program 1008.
Administrative salary.
Yep, that is 1.1 administrators. This is two different individuals who are in that amount.
Well, one says non-certified salary 659,320. What is that?
That'll be for all the IT techs that are working.
And then for the administrative salary right above that, is that one person at 179,657? No? Oh, okay.
Those are the administrative salary for certified staff members.
That is comprised of two different people, correct?
Two people, yeah, correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the 1.15 at the top, you referenced that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Rose?
So I'm going back to Ms. Weaver's question. So if under 600 supplies on the right-hand side of the, I guess specifically it's the third page, there's line items. And it says like last year it was appropriated 230. And this year you're asking for 1,495. Then it was zero and zero, 250, 715 and zero. So that's a big, so just that one section went from 1,195 to $14,000. So what is that? Why, that's a pretty big jump. I see overall the supplies are down, but that one section is pretty big.
I can speak to that. There's a number of items because of the pandemic with supplies and our coding supplies for our activities with our students that we've included in this year's budget, that we normally did not include in the budgets in the years past. That's some curricular stuff that we need to continue to provide the opportunities for both the coding programs at the elementary school and also the video production programs at the middle school and high school.
Can I answer your question, Ms. Rose? Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Yeah, Ms. Parati, I think that was Ms. Parati's question, not mine, but to Ms. Rose's point. I think under ours, it just says headphones and cables. So just want to clarify that the 611 is not just headphones and cables, it's, it's other things.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Ms. Weaver. Just in years past, we have not been able to provide opportunities for the kids to use the robots in coding, especially at the elementary school level, because the kids are not able to share devices. Not only devices, but also share the robots. We found a virtual program that we can also provide opportunities that the kids are creating opportunities with virtual robots. And I think that's more important because now every single student can program their own robot in a virtual environment. That can happen in, for years to come, and only for years to come, to share collaboratively, collaboratively with their students, other fellow students right now. So that's what we looked at. So in years past, we have not used those funds for that. And so we try to offset it in other areas so that it can provide the coding opportunities for our elementary students. And not only that, our video making opportunities for other students.
Perfect, thank you. And we would love, I think, a presentation again of those second graders coding for us.
I have some kids lined up for you guys right away.
All right, do we have any more questions? If not, I'm going to turn it back to you, Dr. Brummett.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. We are now going to talk about sports and after, non-athletic and athletic, or activity. Non-athletic and athletic activities. Mr. Myers?
Good evening. Chris, I'm going to jump in for just one second on that. Information request from a couple of programs ago for school counseling. The $140,000 in the initial request, program request and superintendent request just need to be reclassified in the amount of $8,372 down to the 30 line item.
just need to be reclassified in the amount of $8,372 down to the 30 line item. So the revised numbers will be 131, 977, and 8,372. It doesn't change anything in the overall program. It's just a key punch error when that was put in.
Can that, so will the board get a corrected?
Yeah, we'll put a corrected copy out after, we got to do this through the system at the office.
Okay, so we will make a corrected page.
Yeah, that's, it's no impact item.
Thank you.
Now it is Mr. Myers.
Can you tell us which tab you're on?
Which tab? Not, it's not athletic. Number of the tab would be, I don't have that in front of me. Does anybody else happen to have the tab colors? I know it's a little further down.
It is, excuse me, it's the second brown tab.
And we'll start with the non-athletic budget, just because that's more of a clean-cut item. The non-athletic budget is what supports our clubs and activities. I'll wait for one second just to make sure that everybody's able to identify it. So just quickly, when you're looking at that, the majority of the salaries are all contract negotiated. So those are items that are in the contract and given to support staff that provide opportunities for for our students at all different levels. These range from, you know, clubs that are standard for every year, and then clubs that are created and kind of to the needs of the school or of the student body. There's a, if you move down, there are some items that we allow for our middle schools and elementary schools and the high school, which are, you know, $400 apiece, and the high school is $1,000. Those are for supplies for our programs. But more or less, these are programs that are run each year, that just provide students that may not be, they may not want to be in the music or athletics, but it does kind of allow them to connect with the school community. We have teachers that are willing to support those causes. Are there any particular questions in regards to this area?
Those would be some of the particular clubs at the high school, correct?
Correct. So, you know, ping pong, even to our full standing, like DECA, our class offices, Stop the Stigma Club, you know, so German clubs. So we have clubs that come in and out. There are some times where students have a passion for it, so they create a proposal, they bring the presentation, and, you know, the leaders of our school will evaluate it, and if we have enough support, they go ahead and move the club forward. And it really provides a good opportunity for, you know, if you have a two- or three-year span where we have some kids that are really interested in one particular topic, it gives them a place to come, a safe environment, where they can kind of talk about a topic or work together. Ms. Weaver, I think you had your hand raised?
Hello, Mr. Myers. Just a quick question. Maybe you, not you, I'm not sure how this classifies, but could you just somewhat explain the difference between a B2 advisor and a B4 advisor?
Yeah, so your B2s are your standard clubs that are actually listed in the contract. So if you look in the contract, a B2 position is listed by the job in the contract. B4s are kind of a chunk of money that each school gets to support those clubs that come in and out each year. Oftentimes, many of them are standard as well, but you will get the opportunity to fund, you know, a club where, you know, we had German club that began three or four years ago, because we had a group of kids that were really invested and wanted to make a bigger connection and wanted to have an opportunity to meet together and do different events and things. So we ran with it, and it worked out very well for the time being. And then sometimes those clubs will kind of go through their cycle, and if those students leave and the club no longer has support, a lot of times we'll move on and offer an additional club to that. So that's where your B4 club steps in.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And just to make a point, if Mr. Miller was here tonight, he would have corrected you by saying it's table tennis, not ping pong. Yep, he was very particular about that when I was there. Okay, do we have any more questions?
They had a meeting yesterday. They had a.
All right.
Without any other.
Excellent.
Athletic question is a little bit more robust. You know, try provide our student athletes with the safest, you know, most supportive possible environment. Everything for our kids.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute, Mr. Myers. We have.
Be able to operate and organize.
We have somebody that has their mic, somebody that has a telephone number that's on our screen. Can you please mute your microphone? Thank you very much.
I actually was able to mute them, Dr. Fletcher.
What's that?
I had to mute them myself, because when they're on the phone, they can't see us, but, thank you.
Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Myers. Please go ahead.
Oh, no worries. So there are, so there are a few areas, obviously, where you might see a slight adjustment, but I'll kind of.
You're kind of chopping, Mr. Myers. I don't know if you've got a bad connection. Actually, now you're frozen.
Let me move.
Right.
I apologize, let me move. Everybody can hear me before, correct?
Um, yeah, well, then we both, another host.
Can you see me?
Lou, you got a mute.
Free car payment, because we got his.
Apologize.
A little bit better.
Yes.
Is this better for everybody? Sorry, thank you. Just moved around school.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, within our program, you'll see it kind of broken down, obviously, into multi-tier. Most of our requests stay similar. A lot of the items are things that we need on a yearly basis. There are a few areas where you might see a slight increase, and some of those things are noted. So if you look at, you know, your 599 area, we did have a little bump, because you're going to see, last year, we didn't have to recondition our football equipment fully, because we didn't have a full season. Whereas this year, we did, so that's going to see a slight jump. And we also had to include some EMS football coverage. Previously, we were able to, we worked hard for EMS coverage at our games. I was made aware this year that we would be moving forward. So if you looked in the 599, that's an example of where you might see a slight jump in, from one year to the next for our budget. Mostly, though, you're going to see everything else is relatively consistent. I think the only other area where you might see a jump as well is in the 690. And that's simply because this year is a year to purchase football uniforms. Football uniforms, they're the most, not in cost, but in quantity. So usually, those items are just going to be a little higher, so the cost in that area will just be a little greater than in the area previously. But we do offer every CIEC-sponsored sport. We offer our kids a tremendous opportunity, many freshman programs, along with JV and varsity. So, you know, I think we do a great job of, with the board's support of meeting the needs of all of our student athletes in order for them to continue to progress in their athletic fields. Are there any questions in our, on the athletic area?
I have one for you.
Yes.
What is the cycle for replacement on football uniforms?
Five years. So all of our uniforms are five years. So we do get the most out of our uniforms, for sure.
Okay. Ms. Rose?
I'm just curious. I'm assuming what the administrative salary is. What are the non-certified salaries? That's a big, it's a big one. I don't know if you can answer that, or if that's a Lou question?
I believe, Lou, if you want to go ahead, I believe it's our Assistant Athletic Director, but.
Right, you have the Assistant Athletic Director, who's an FT, plus all of the 62 sport coaches that work for us across the three seasons. So that is, if I remember correctly, about $330,000, $340,000 in coaching dollars, and the rest is the Assistant AD.
That makes sense. I was looking, and it said administrative positions one, non-certified position one. And I was wondering, who makes $400,000? And I'm clearly in the wrong industry.
If you're making that recommendation, Mrs. Rose, I'll run with it.
No one's making that.
Yeah, you can see further up, it has a non-certified support 64. Those are all the coaching slots that we have.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Oh, very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Appreciate your time.
Take care.
And I believe next up this evening is Ms. Kim Davis, who will talk about continuing in adult education.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the second gray tab from the beginning, which is the continuing adult education tab. Give you a second to get there. All right, so the continuing adult education program is organized into two components. The first component is the state mandated program that offers the high school credit diploma program. There's the GED with the practice testing, adult basic education, English for speakers of other languages, and then also citizenship. The second component is the enrichment course offerings, and those are open to the general public. Anyone can, you know, take those courses. All budget requests that you see in there are aligned to the program's goals and needs, which meets all of the state requirements and the guidelines. There is an overall decrease of $2,380 in next year's budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have in regards to this area.
Yes, Ms. Weaver?
Just kind of two questions. One, is enrollment changed with COVID? And do we expect those numbers to fluctuate or increase, decrease, or?
Do you mean with our student enrollment?
Correct.
With the mandated program? No, not really. We were able to transition to online. So, no, I think in comparison, we have about 12 students enrolled in our high school diploma program, and I think we had roughly, you know, about the same. But it's, no, not huge changes.
Okay, thanks. And I'm just going to follow up. The PSAT, in terms of testing, I'm just curious, is that part, is that separate from our overall? Because I know we pay for PSATs for.
No, this is not. This is for folks that have already, that are sort of adults, I guess. Anyone 18 and over. So, no, it has nothing to do with PSATs.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. Like, one of the line items is tests, and it says PSATs 9 through 11 as the line item. I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry.
Under supplies, it's 617. Districts wide, and then the 617 on the next page says PSATs grade 5 through 11.
I think you're under the wrong tab, because I don't have a 617.
Oh, my God, I'm under curriculum and assessment. Never mind.
That's okay. That's all right.
Thank you. Budgets. Real time here, people.
Hey, that's all right. Mr. Sharma?
Hey, just a quick question. Is there any revenue coming in? If you, any of the courses that you offer, like ESL courses or any citizenship courses?
No, no, we don't have revenue from those programs. These are free to our Newington residents that are mandated. Any funds that do come in, like say someone outside of Newington wants to attend this, you know, one of the programs there in terms of the citizenship or the credit diploma. I think there's like a $100 fee, but that money goes into our general fund in the town, and we don't see that money. There is, on the enrichment side, a fee that goes along with the courses, but that really funds the, like, the stipend, or the, I guess I would call it salary of the enrichment folks. And so, for example, the enrichment, I think they get, if they offer a class, maybe I'm teaching a, I don't know, Tax 101 class. Because some of these enrichment courses, they can be a one-time, or they can be, you know, guitar lessons over a course of weeks. But really, the money that they receive for that pays like the instructor's salary. I want to say they make $25 an hour, but that's, it might be up since the last time I looked at it. And then any fees that are required within this, people kind of pay their own fee, so a supply fee. So if they're doing some art instruction, you know, they're paying an additional fee for maybe some canvas or their paints or their brushes. But we don't really make money on this. It just really goes to pay the folks that are offering an enrichment course.
So the money that comes in goes to the town? Are you saying it does not go to the school, or it goes?
No, not for the mandated. No, no, it doesn't. We're required by the state to offer these programs. There is a, so there is a grant that we apply for every year to the state, but that money goes right to the town, and we don't see that money.
Right, that's what I wanted to know. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Okay, I don't see any more questions. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Christine Freeman. You're going to be hearing from her for quite a while. She covers a variety of areas. So, Ms. Freeman?
Good evening, everybody. I think that Lou Jekomowitz is the only one that is covering more areas this evening. We're going to be starting with CTE. It is the first blue tab in your binder. CTE is formerly known as workforce development. The primary goal of CTE is to provide career exploration for our high school students through project-based learning and a variety of internships. And the primary focus is on building leadership skills among our students and building their capacity, not only in different areas, skill areas, but really generating interest in those areas, and again, allowing them to explore avenues for different careers. This year, we're very excited that we're in the beginning stages of talking about a teacher prep academy. So adding on to CTE, taking some of what we're doing with early childhood and trying to attract some of Newington students to start to kind of homegrown some of our own teachers with the hope, of course, that they would come back to Newington and be educators here. When you look at the budget requests, we're very fortunate that the vast majority of funds for CTE is covered by the Perkins Grant. There is an ask in there for supplies, and you'll see a small increase in there, and that's just to cover increase of consumables primarily in the culinary classes. And there's also an increase in the other expenses, and that is a request to support some of the DECA and HOSA competitions that our students participate in. As you might imagine, through COVID, a lot of those experiences were not available to them. So we're really excited to have kids being able to participate again.
Dr. Fletcher, you're on mute. I don't know if you said something, if you called on any of us.
I apologize. My dog was barking, and I muted myself. Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Thank you. I didn't want to jump the gun. Really quickly, I noticed in the items, just two questions about that in terms of replacing AP environmental and. in terms of replacing AP Environmental and Anatomy and Physiology textbooks. Is that just because they're in different spot?
Jessica, I'm sorry. I think that you're in.
Am I still in the wrong section?
We're, we're in CTE.
Oh, my God. I'm literally, I'm getting off CTE. I'm so sorry, Dr. Fletcher. Reading CTE. Let's, let's just, next verse.
Okay, Ms. Dros.
All right. My question's the same question as always. The administrative salary, it's, the town is, who oversees CTE?
So I believe your question is who oversees the CTE?
Yeah, so the administrative salary of point one position, you know, the point one. So in the other one, like Seth Korn did, did art for point one. Who is the, or, I'm sorry, it was Wendy Kraus, because it was the town one. Who is that administrative salary?
This is Kristen's, a partial.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sharma.
Quick question. I'm looking at certified salaries, and I believe there are like seven positions. Am I right? And are those, are those teachers, or?
Yes, they're all teachers.
And will that be in the high school, right?
Yes.
So, so those are like seven teachers then? Okay. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Hut Wagner.
Thank you. Under the textbooks, the, the increase of around four thousand-ish is that? What courses required the textbooks that didn't contribute?
Yep. So the, what I had mentioned about the beginning stages of the teacher prep academy, right now, we are hoping to run two new ECE courses in conjunction with UConn. One of them is called If You Love It, Teach It, and that has a required text. And the other is Contemporary Social Issues and Sports, which also has a required text. So that amount is for those textbooks. And of course, everything at the high school depends on enrollment. So we're a little bit in a wait-and-see pattern right now, given where we are in the year.
Okay, can I ask just one additional, Dr. Fletcher?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Under the Supplies, I know you mentioned before that most of them are going to our culinary program. And I was just wondering that, that increase, do you feel that's because of kind of increase in prices of grocery-type food items, or is it an expansion of that culinary program?
I think that it is an increase in price of food. And if you think about last year at this time, we were talking about students in hybrid learning. And so especially in culinary, kids were not there every day. So I think that that's probably part of it too, Beth.
Okay, Ms. Yow.
So I have a question for Kristen as well, if that's okay.
Yep.
I see that there was certified salaries are going to be increased. Is that with the new positions that you plan on adding?
We're not adding any new positions into the CTE department, although we'll take them, but there are no requests for new positions.
So I see.
I would assume, I'm sorry, I would assume, I'm sorry, Anastasia, I would assume that any increase is probably a contractual increase of current NTA members. But Lou would be the best to answer that.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
And then I don't know if Beth asked this, because I couldn't really hear. With the dues and memberships under other expenses going from zero to twenty-one thousand, did you say that because more kids would be in person? I didn't know if that's what she had asked, under other expenses, dues and memberships?
Yeah, it's, the initial request was for twenty-one thousand, and Dr. Bremet cut about half of that. So the ask is ten thousand, and that is to support student participation and membership in DECA and HOSA competitions. So those are competitions within business and marketing.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sharma.
Quick question, Kristen. So we got seven certified teachers, right? How many, how many, how many courses do we offer, are we offering every year to students?
Off the top of my head, I would probably ballpark it between eighteen and twenty, but Mr. Sharma, if you want an exact count, I would need to go back into Power School and really look. And there's also a difference between the number of courses that we have available, because we have curriculum that unfortunately is not being implemented. So if we only get, say, eight students that sign up for a class, given what staffing is, it's hard to legitimize running that class. So sometimes, different courses run on different years. But if you're interested in knowing the exact number of courses, I can get that for you and get it to Dr. Bremet.
So you're talking about eighteen to twenty, are those in-house courses? Or is that something with you partnered with UConn or CCSU? Or are you talking about?
Yep, all of those, all of those courses are in-house, and some of the courses, the students are able to earn credit through Capital Community College as well. And right now, we've been exploring partnering also with Tungssis and those area community colleges as well. Pretty soon, they're all going to be consolidating into one.
Right, so you can let me know later on. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. And Ms. Paradi.
Thank you. I was just running back to the dues and memberships. Were there no DECA competitions last year? Just due to the pandemic? Is that why it was zero?
That is correct. The students didn't go anywhere.
Okay. And then, just to follow, so you requested twenty-one thousand, and Dr. Bremet cut it to ten. Can you just, what does that mean? Is, is there half the students get to go, or what does that impact to the students?
Um, so I certainly would never want to speak for my superintendent, but I will speak to the first part of the question. So just for clarification, the program leader is Jamie Harris. He's an assistant principal at the high school, and he works closely with a teacher who is a program leader, who is Ally Miller. So they're the ones who put the budget together. Ten thousand dollars was requested as a one-A item. So that's considered to be, we really need this to make sure that the program runs as is. The additional money was put in as a level three, which is, listen, it would be really nice to have this to kind of really enhance things, but it's not necessary in order to run the program as is. As far as Dr. Bremet's decision-making, I would ask her to answer that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't questioning Dr. Bremet. I was more of what kind of impact? Like, does it mean only half of the students get to compete or go to the competition? Or, you know, is it just a more competitive than?
Okay, it's, it simply means that there will be a greater cost on the students. I think that, I am certain that Mrs. Miller was probably asking, as, as anybody would, and with the hopes and dreams that we could fund as much as possible for the students. That is very rare that that happens. So the students will offset the cost and their families.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you. And Ms. Weaver.
On the right page now. These are great times. Actually, my, my question was exactly what Ms. Paradi said. I just know DECA is growing like wildfire. Ms. Miller is, Ms. Miller is just like growing this thing. So it's great to see. And I just wanted to, not a question, but a quick comment. I'm really excited to hear more about this pipeline we're starting for teachers. I think that's a really great idea, and I think, you know, as the state looks for more teachers, just want to comment. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful initiative. So I'm really excited to see where that goes. We have a lot of Newingtons own already in our school system, I think. Would it hurt to have a few more?
All right, thank you. And I don't see any more hands, so we can move on.
Okay, only seven more programs to go for me. Second one is World Language. Primary goal in the World Language Department is to support students with their communication, which includes reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We offer traditional modern languages in French, Spanish, and Italian, and we do offer the Classical Language of Latin once the students are up at the high school. Another exciting aspect that has been growing for us is the seal of biliteracy and the number of students who have been earning the seal of biliteracy even through the pandemic. I don't have the recent number on it, but when we started, it was a very small handful of students. And now we are up in the, in the hundreds. So that is a very, very exciting for us to see. So in the World Language Department, the vast majority of asks in the Supplies areas is to really support and enhance literacy and world language. One of the fantastic things that Rosanna Fassal, who is the World Language Coordinator, has done, has pushed more authentic learning of world languages through the reading of Spanish texts and French texts and so forth. So it's pretty fantastic to go into world language classrooms and see a lot of authentic literature that children, that students are reading in order to develop their language skills. Also included in the costs are some of our exams that we give, the National Latin Exam, and our Honor Society memberships, and then membership for Teachers Association for teachers of Spanish and Portuguese.
Okay, Ms. Dros.
The Honor Society memberships. So are those subsidized? Because I know I've written a few checks out to them. So is it like a partial? Would it cost more for parents to join if that was cut?
Yes, we do try to subsidize some of the costs, and there might be, Danielle, I would have to check, but there also might, might be a fee that the school has to pay in order to be in conjunction with the Honor Society.
Thank you.
And Ms. Weaver.
Just a question. Can you clarify the breakdown of the salaries? There, yeah. There's like four positions, but I can't tell if they're like, it looks like they're spread across middle schools and high schools.
Yes, that is correct. The, the coordinator's position is allocated across the two middle schools plus the high school.
Okay, so is this like one position?
It is. The administrator's salaries is one point one five positions.
Okay, I understand that. This is, but one person, I guess, is my question.
It's one person plus a portion of another administrator.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any more hands, so it looks like we can move to the next one, Ms. Freeman.
Okay, we are moving on to music. It is the first gray tab after mathematics. Our primary goal in music is to promote and improve student musicianship, as well as promote the cultural, societal, and aesthetic values through music. You will see an increase in music for this year in supplies. There are two reasons for that. One is an increase in PPE. Actually, we did need it this year, and it was just forgotten about. If you all remember, I think that we left last year thinking we were at the end of pandemic, and we were a little bit surprised, and we all came back in the fall. So Dr. Bremet was able to, to fund that PPE for the music, and so the department, so this year, they added into that budget, into the budget. So that's why you're seeing that bump in supplies. There also is some replacement orchestra supplies for student playing that is also contributing to that increase. There is an increase in the property, the eleven hundred dollars, and that is for student trumpets at the middle level.
Kristen, can I just elaborate that the PPE you're referring to, is that the socks that they put on the end of the instrument to prevent spray?
Yes, Dr. Bremet. Mr. Kelly is going to be mad at me if I don't mention that they're called the bell covers. So we don't put really socks on the instruments. It's the bell covers. But yes, that's exactly what it is. And it does reduce significantly the amount of aerosol that is coming out of instruments, particularly horn instruments.
Okay, Ms. Hut Wagner.
Thank you. Just wanted to ask about the, the full-time elementary position under the program needs. Is that for, oh, just, I don't think it says, just elementary position? Is that something that would be shared amongst all four schools? Or is that at a specific school? And I apologize in advance if it does say that in here, and I just didn't see it.
That would be a position that would be shared among the schools. You'll see that in their program needs, they actually had requested a full-time position for elementary and also for the high school.
Hey, Ms. Weaver. You're muted, Ms. Weaver.
Dr. Fletcher, we're really going to need to, I don't know. Okay. Under five ninety-nine is, just a question about, is the piano compass just like, because we have more obligations at the high school? Is that why it was more expensive at the high school than it is at all the other schools? For the, all of five ninety-nine seems to be, you know, accompanied. Okay.
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. I figured, just want to make sure.
Okay. I don't see any more questions, Ms. Freeman, so we can move on.
I think we are on to Wellness next, and Wellness is the next tab, if you're in music, and it's brown. Goal of the Wellness Program is to support all students in mastering the skills of the portrait of a graduate by helping them achieve physical, emotional, mental, and spiritual wellness. Our teachers really strive to create safe and supportive learning environments that celebrates and honors the diversity of students we have, and that not only includes in the health classroom, but also in the physical education setting. An exciting improvement we've had this year is it is the first time that the Online Digital Citizenship Course, which technically falls under Health and Safety, is running. And we enrolled some students last semester, and then we are running that again this semester. The primary asks in the Wellness Department fall under two primary categories. One is to maintain the life fitness equipment in each of our wellness centers. So we have contracts for those in order for them to repair them and maintain them to make sure that those, that equipment is safe for the students to use. And then the remaining amount is in the supplies that are used to support both cooperative and competitive games, K through twelve.
All right, do we have any questions? Well, it seems like things are well on the Wellness. Well, here we go. Ms. Paradi.
I'm sorry. I just, I was just wondering, it says under program needs that since the credits requirements have increased, it says you may need additional staff. Is that not this year? So it's, you're able to accommodate the increase in credit requirements?
So right now, we are accommodating the credit requirements. The Health One curriculum is becoming more and more chock-full of state mandated topics. So it is getting to be challenging to literally cover all of those state mandated topics within that semester's course. So again, I think that every program that's gonna, that's gonna present would probably say we would love additional staffing to support more electives and, and to be able to do the curriculum, the, the, just the topics covered, do justice in there. But yes, right now, we are able to staff our classes that are needed for students to get the credits that they need to graduate.
Hey, Ms. Weaver.
Oh, just a comment. I wanted to say, thank you for that detail about digital citizenship. I think that's great. And I think that's just a wonderful aspect to adding to our definition of wellness. So that's great to hear. I think it's like Internet Safety Day or something. So that's really good. All of the, I guess, just to explain the difference between the zero appropriation last year to then all of the supply requests this year. If you could just elaborate, I'm assuming it's due to COVID.
Actually, not, not really.
Really? All right.
We, we did, we did buy supplies, but last year, we were able to, I don't know if you're if you recall, Jessica, but last year when we were doing budget presentations, we showed drastic cuts in a lot of areas because of realized savings, and I would have to ask Lou to give details about that. So that's why there was $0 appropriated to wellness for this year, because those items were able to be bought the previous year with realized savings.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
I think that was part of the buy ahead on several things. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, looks like we can move on to the next one.
Okay, we're moving next to science, which is two tabs from where you are, and it's blue. Goal in the science department is to continue align all of our pedagogical practices to the NGSS, which is the newest national framework for science teaching and learning, and to also align our practices to a 5E model, which is very different than what the vast majority of us experienced when we were in school. The whole goal of the NGSS is to support students in thinking and working like scientists and engineers, and also to provide them foundational knowledge in our three primary areas of science, which are physical, earth, and life sciences. The majority of the asks in the science department outside of salaries is generally going to be in supplies. As you can imagine, there is a great amount of consumables that are used in our science classrooms, and that is K through 12. We're also asking to continue to use a program called IXL that is used for skill maintenance in many of the program areas. And something that is new this year, that the science teachers actually just had a rep in today at their meeting, is a program called Inner Orbit, which is an assessment program that teachers can use to create assessments that align with the new curricular framework. So already, the feedback from the teachers has been fantastic on that. So that would be an additional ask. And somebody might have a question about textbooks. I'm queuing you, Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, Ms. Weaver.
We're on the right section. Just a clarification on that, is this gonna be, we can do without, and then buy behind, or just on, on the AP Science and the Anatomy and Physiology?
Yeah, there currently are textbooks right now that are available for the students to use. We, we can do without. It would be the hope that there would be realized savings, and we would be able to purchase those. But I can assure you that the programs will run, but we are getting at a point where those, those textbooks are becoming outdated.
All good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, looks like we can move on to the next one, Ms. Freeman.
Okay, we're on STEM, which is kind of like science, science, technology, engineering, math, mathematics. So STEM takes an interdisciplinary approach, and it's about applying all of these concepts to help students develop their skills and problem-solving in all aspects of engineering. At the middle school, we offer a STEM exploratory. So that's included in other exploratories like art and music and library and media. And most of you probably already know that we have a biomedical academy at Martin Kellogg, and an aerospace engineering academy at John Wallace. Both of those academies now continue on at Newington High School. The biomed is overseen by Ms. Freese, and the aerospace engineering is Mr. Emerson, and then Mr. Connolly has also picked up a class in that area as well. When we look at the asks for this program, we're seeing some increases for good reason. We have, these programs have become very popular, and they're growing. So currently, when students get to the high school, medical sciences ends at, it's called Medical Science III, and we would like to add a Medical Science IV course. So with that, we'll require additional supplies. This is a medical science course in which students can earn their EMT certification, provided that they're meeting some other requirements, one of them being of age. And we are also expanding in the aerospace engineering academy and adding on the next aerospace class, and that would be called just Aerospace III, not a very fancy name to it. And aerospace is designed after Project Lead the Way. This is a very popular program. With it carries the potential for college credits as well, which is something we always aim to do for our high school students as much as we can.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
apologies. Full of questions. In terms of the dues and memberships, does that have to do with the medical academy or the EMS one, then?
The dues and memberships are mostly associated with Project Lead the Way. So you have to sort of buy into, quote unquote, their program and be a member of that for the teacher to implement the program and the students to receive the credit that would accrue them college credit as well.
Perfect, okay. And just want to give my absolute support of this. I'm so excited. I know, my sister took anatomy and physiology and absolutely loved Miss Freese, and it's really exciting to hear that we're doing EMT services. I'm really, really excited to hear that.
Well, Ms. Freese also did ask for an ambulance as part of her program, but I believe that we denied that request. But it was, she tried.
I'm noting that, yeah.
Ms. Yop.
Just to piggyback off that, is the EMT program something that you want, or is that something that we currently have?
It is something that we hope that we can add for next year. So there's three courses that are required prior to that, and that's the Med Science I, II, and III. Med Science IV would be the program that we would offer then as sort of the last step in the trajectory of the biomed program.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good. Oh, we do have another question, Ms. Rose.
Do. I turn my computer, I'm like, here, like, busy, like, taking notes, and I don't want to just show the top of my head the way I'm set up. So I guess I have a question. It goes to this, and I assume some of the other programs you're gonna talk about, Kristen. Have, has Newington ever done an audit of how many students, like, want to get into these programs, how many can't get into them, you know, how many are denied? And, and you don't have to answer this now, but I would, if you could maybe get it to me later, get it to the board later. And also, how many students, you know, take an ECE class or class like this in preparation for college, and then they get into a college, and the college is like, yeah, no, we're not taking that credit. I don't know, I know that's after the fact, after they've graduated, but I would just be curious, like, how many of those credits from, like, Tuncsus or CCSU, and are they, are they actually transferring to the better colleges? So I would just, don't need an answer right now, but if you could, without driving yourself crazy, don't lose sleep over it, but I would just be curious of those answers.
Yeah, I'll respond to just a little of it. We will have to definitely research the number of students that want to get into electives and are denied. And I would prefer to do that sort of across all of those areas. If every coordinator was here, they would tell you, we turn away kids from science classes, from math classes, from many of the humanities classes. I know that for ECE credits, those transfer to about, the statistic is like 80 to 85 percent. The vast majority of colleges and universities that will not accept UConn credits are typically the likes of Harvard, Anil, and Dartmouth, although some of them will. But I can get that information from Mr. Corn.
Okay, Ms. Yop.
Just to piggyback off that, I know you can't get the answer right now, but how many students are actually enrolled in the biomed class I, II, and III currently? I'm not expecting an answer now, but if that's something you could email me, if that's okay.
Just, just clarification on that. Students that are enrolled in the biomedical academy at Newington High School?
Yes.
Okay. And I need one more clarification on the question. Are you looking for biomedical academy students or just students that are enrolled in any of the biomed classes? The difference is that I can be a student that just wants to take an elective, but I'm not in the academy, or I can be a student that's within the academy and I'm also taking the class.
So if they're within the academy, would they be eligible for this EMT course?
Yes, as long as it's...
Or is it only, and if I take them as electives, am I also eligible for that EMT course?
It would be pretty difficult to take the EMT course as an elective, because you're not going to have any of the prerequisites. So if you will have taken the trajectory of Med Science I, II, and III before you get to IV, chances are you are an academy student. However, it would be different for a Medical Science I, that might be a student just kind of interested in taking it, maybe doesn't know if he or she wants to be part of the academy, takes it, enjoys the class, but just decides not to enroll in the academy. So once you get up to IV, you're not going to see students in there that are not part of the academy.
So I think I'm interested in more of the academy enrollment number, as opposed to just students taking it as an elective.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, we can move on to the next item.
So now we're moving on to social studies, which is the next tab. It's red. Primary goal of the social studies department is for students to learn how to be contributing to both the local and global society. We want them to be able to act ethically and responsibly, and also to be able to understand multiple diverse perspectives. Primary focus in social studies has been the shift to the C3 framework. If you've been with the board for a while, we have our social studies coordinator come to a curriculum committee meeting and do sort of an overview of how pedagogy has changed in our social studies classrooms. One of the highlights this year has been that Newington High School participated in the pilot of the Black and Latino Studies course. This is a required course from the, from, from the State Department. It is, it is a statute that we offer this. It does not have to be sort of in your program until next year. I have to give kudos to both Jamie Kravanka and Jason Barbarata, who participated in some intensive training this last summer, created the curriculum in our implementing this course for the first time. I have visited the course many times. They're, they're having a blast in there, and the kids are so completely grateful to have a course, especially our students of color, who have verbally shared with me that they feel very happy that they, that they are being represented in more transparent ways at Newington High School. When we look at the asks in social studies, primarily the supplies are for items at the elementary level, if you could imagine some of the kind of project-based learning that students do at those grades. As we move up in levels, the majority of supplies come in the form of texts and readings, specifically in informational texts, and also to online subscriptions. Also included in social studies is IXL, that I'd mentioned before, and study.com, which is used to support students with their study skills at the high school.
I have a question regarding IXL. I'm familiar with it, because I worked with it while I was at the high school. With each subject or each grade level, do you need a separate contract, or is it one contract that covers everything?
The contract is a little bit by subject. So you can buy a contract that's just math or math plus, and you sort of get everything else. You can't just choose math and social studies, you get the other content areas with it. And then, Dr. Fletcher, it's offered by level, which would be by school. So we buy a 5-8 bundle for Wallace, a 5-8 bundle for Kellogg, a 9-12 bundle for high school.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Yop.
Hi, I had a question. I see the increase with the textbooks. Seeing that we have Chromebooks and, you know, technology's advancing, is there anything that, I mean, I'm looking, some for district, I'm trying to go back to the key codes, one's for Wallace, and one's for Kellogg. Is there anything that maybe we could buy in place of that, so the cost isn't as high? And do they offer anything else?
So some of the textbooks that we use are online. Unfortunately, I would love to report to you that the textbook companies offer online textbooks for a fraction of the cost of typical paper textbooks, but that's not the case. So we get a little bit of savings when we go to online text, but the savings unfortunately is not as significant as we would like it to be. We're, and we're a bit unfortunately beholden to the, to the textbook companies.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Ms. Hutt Wagner.
Thank you. In line with the textbooks, when we're looking at purchasing textbooks, just in general, are we purchasing, like, let's say you offer three sections of a specific class, does every student get a textbook, or is it like, they're shared amongst the different sections offered? I don't know if I'm making sense, like, I remember, you know, I'm sure I'm dating myself, but bringing a textbook home, covering it with a brown paper bag, that would be very exciting. But I know, like, at the school where I teach, that students just don't bring home textbooks anymore, and there's just like a class set. So I just wanted to see what the numbers were involving that.
So I just want to point out that, that in the textbooks, if you, if you draw your eye over to the superintendent column, the, the ask is actually very low. So Ms. Antonio, who's a social studies coordinator, she's looking to get new texts for psychology and sociology. The curriculum is being updated, and the texts are very, very outdated. So it goes back to what we talked about with the AP Environmental Science and the Anatomy and Physiology. Can the programs run with those texts? They can. Are they the texts that provide the most accurate and up-to-date information? No, they are not. And so in those, for those classes, they, at the high school level, it generally is a book per student. At the middle level, sometimes it's a little bit different. Oftentimes, there is a class set for the students, particularly if the teacher is one that is using a lot of reading material that he or she finds online instead of in the textbook.
Okay, anyone else have a question? Seeing none, we can move on to the next one.
And we are on my last program, which is English Language Learning, and it is pink. I don't know, like, the third pink one, it's just gonna say English Learners. So just to start off with a bit of confusion, last year was the first time that English Learners occurred as a separate budgeted department outside of special education. So this was the second year, and we decided to change the name, and it is now called Multi-Language Learners. So if you hear me refer to Multi-Language Learners, it is just replacing the term English Learners. The goal of Multi-Language Learner Department is to focus on providing direct service in instruction in English, and that is in reading, in writing, speaking, and listening to a population of students that we refer to as newcomers, and they are just as they sound, students who are brand-new to our country and have little-to-no acquisition of the English language. Our teachers also support students through push-in models, so supporting them in the classroom, which really is the richest environment for students to learn content and to also acquire the English language. We currently service about 300 multilingual learners in Newington, and of those 300 students, 245 require direct service. So direct service would be needing regular contact with the EL teacher, and not necessarily, we call them students that are just sort of being monitored once they pass the loss links at a certain level, and we just kind of more or less keep an eye on them to make sure that they continue to progress. The asks in this department include Imagine Learning. This is an online platform that has replaced Rosetta Stone. We did a little experimenting with the two programs and find that Imagine Learning is far more engaging for the students, particularly at the high school level. particularly at the high school level. Um, there's a bump in instructional supplies, and this is really to expand the teen library for our adolescents at the middle school and at the um early part of the high school. Um, it, it's challenging to find texts that are in English, um because we, we want students interacting with the language as much as possible. And that if, if you will, imagine a twelve or a thirteen-year-old um and giving them maybe a second-grade level text, if that is the readability for the child, where the theme isn't quote-unquote babyish, right? So we usually don't give a thirteen-year-old a text that is meant for a seven-year-old. So it's really tricky to find these types of texts that are suitable at the readability, but that the theme is going to be something that is exciting and engaging for the students. Um, there's also an increase this year because we, we have an ask for testing supplies. Um, and that is for the loss lengths. That's not something that happens every single year. We just hit one of those years where our supplies um really um really got low on there. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Uh, just a question about the support salaries. Are those pairs or are those um like district-wide covering? Because it looks like we moved one from the high school to one of the middle schools. But covering all of our um covering one elementary, I'm not sure, in terms of I don't know, flu?
Yeah, those are uh have been uh EL tutorial positions in the past. I was just looking at a moment ago. Uh, you wanted Martin Kellogg, maybe just missed classified, should be back at the high school. I've got to check on that tomorrow to see where that person's actually assigned, if they were moved or it's just a now we put it in the wrong classification. It's appropriate, you know, there's three positions uh for the program.
Okay, so three, three
Yep.
EL tutors.
Yep.
Thank you.
And, and, and typically, um Jessica, as we do with the EL teachers, um sometimes it's very difficult to predict even where the teachers are going to go. We just had a shift mid-year with having um to take one of the teachers from Chafee and make her part-time at Chafee. So she could be also part-time at Patterson because of Patterson's population was growing. And, and that's just something that happens throughout the year. It's very difficult to predict um with uh families moving into the district.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, Ms. Yop?
Um, thank you. Um, my question is under salaries, certified salary one eleven zero four, which if the key code's right, that's Anna Reynolds. Is that one-person salary for the one twenty-one, one eighteen? Or is that broken up? Uh, under salaries?
I'll look it up.
Um, Lou, if I'm not mistaken, I, oh, I hope I'm, I'm not out of order by answering this. Um, if I'm not mistaken, some of the some of the salaries get offset by, by title money as well, correct?
Correct. Yeah, that's not the case here. This is one staff member. That's their whole salary.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question, Ms. Yop?
I, I didn't hear what he said. Is he saying that's one staff member's salary at Anna Reynolds?
Yes, that's correct.
That is correct.
And do you know what their position is? Um.
They're an MEL or EL teacher. Signed to Anna Reynolds for the full day.
Okay, so they're an elementary school EL teacher, so they work with the, okay, makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Parati?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Um, just a question about the program. You have three hundred students. Do those students typically stay in the program for their entirety in Newington? So if they come in and, you know, kindergarten, and they're going to be um part of the program until they graduate?
Um, well, we certainly hope not. Um, it, it would always be our goal, especially if we have students moving into Newington um and they are um ML students in kindergarten. We would hope that we see them exiting um by the time they get to um late elementary, early middle school years. That's not what always happens, though. Um, we have um families that come to us that have some of the parents who do speak some English. So the children now are going to have more of an opportunity um to be acquiring the English language. Um, we have some students that we discovered that, that have disabilities, and we may not be able to figure that out until the child is, say, nine or ten years old. And then we have to tease out, is the biggest barrier to learning the English lack acquisition or the, the disability? So, so now the kind of case kind of gets a little bit more complicated. Um, so Amy, I wish that I could tell you, this is what happens with most of the kids. The fact is that um every student is so incredibly different, and we have so many kids that come to us, not in kindergarten, but sometime within the middle of their schooling career. Um, you can imagine how overwhelming it is for um, say, a fifteen- or sixteen-year-old to arrive to Newington High School and is required to take in US history, and we only offer it in English, and the child speaks no English whatsoever. So, so these are the sort of challenges that we, that we have to face in, in supporting our students.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious. I um, I think I was listening back to an old Board of Ed meeting, and I saw a presentation on the program, and I thought it was very worthwhile. I thought it was awesome. My dad came into the country, you know, not speaking English. So, you know, if only he had services like that, you know, when he came in, in second grade. So um, thank you for answering that. I think this is great.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
I have a question. It's probably more for uh Dr. Brummett or maybe Mr. Jacobowitz. So I've heard twice now about title funds. So back in the beginning of the presentation, Dr. Brummett mentioned that the more uh free and reduced lunch students that we have, the more title funds we get. And then uh Ms. Freeman just said something about um, you know, getting title funds for the ELL students or the EL students, or I'm not sure what we call them in Newington. Um, where does, where do those title monies, obviously they don't, they're not offsetting our operating budget. Where is that money going to?
Would you like me to take that one?
Yes, go ahead, Lou.
Okay. Okay, uh, the title funds are segregated in a special revenue fund of the town specifically for the different grants. You know, and there's uh about five or six title grants that are there. You have Title One, which is uh the basic skills uh Title Four for idea. Uh, you have the uh preschool program and several others that are there uh for professional development and stuff. So what you see in your budget will be the typically the total uh staffing count that's there, but the salary is netted out if there's a cross charge to a grant. So if we had a million-dollar budget in the reading program for teachers, and we said there's fifteen teachers that make that up, there would be fifteen in the FTE count, whether they're um getting paid by the board or paid by the grant. The dollars would be less because if a hundred thousand dollars is uh being charged off to the grant, your bu, your operating budget would show nine hundred thousand, and the grant would be charged one hundred thousand. So you'd have the same net result. So you really just have through the position control of knowing what the numbers are uh for being able to determine uh total staffing. So they're not, they're pulled out, but they're, in order to budget them comprehensively, so we, we don't miss anything. We uh track them through the programs.
So just to clarify, what I'm hearing is that, let's say I'm looking at the certified staff for school two makes twenty-six thousand dollars. That may not actually be their salary. Their salary could be a hundred thousand dollars, but the school system out of the operating budget is only paying twenty-six.
Correct, or this is a fractional person working in multiple schools.
No, no, I'm just picking that person as an example.
Yes, yes, that's right, that's right.
Okay.
If it would help, we could actually break out and account for how much money we utilize in title grants to offset salaries, because that is a fairly significant number.
I don't think it would, it, it's not going to affect, it was just, I was just, I keep hearing about it, and I'm like, is it gonna, all of a sudden tomorrow, you're going to tell us we have an extra two million dollars that we can spend?
Let me know.
Sadly, no.
Probably not, through these title funds. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Ms. Weaver?
That might be helpful just for like transparency sake. I don't want to make more work, but, you know, I think it's, it's helpful for everyone to know. Um, and just to that point, too, I guess, like, I see on one of the salary, certified salaries, it, it's like zero, but then sixteen hundred. I'm guessing that's like a partial one. It just seems like a very odd partial one. So just curious about that one. Um, at ten, so it would be one of the middle schools.
Just need a moment to find it here, hold on.
No worries. I mean, it's just a very like point zero one, it feels like would be.
Yeah, Lou, it's for the position at Martin Kellogg.
Maybe that's affected by the grants.
Yes, it is. Uh, one of the teachers over there is paid substantially more than that, and they're fully charged out to uh, uh, it would actually be the um, one of the SIR grants that that person's going, getting picked up by.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any further questions? Okay. I don't see any further questions. So was that your last presentation, Ms. Freeman?
It was, Dr. Fletcher.
You survived it.
And did quite well, I might add. Thank you so much for all your detailed explanations and important uh background stories. So, Dr. Fletcher, we will segue over to Ms. Kraus unless you tell me otherwise.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm wondering, can we all take maybe a three-minute break? And then resume?
That's your call. You're the chair, and I'm happy to do so.
I gotta get up out of my chair. Let's take a three-minute break, and we'll come back, okay?
Oh, you're trying to ice me, Dr. Fletcher.
Oh, no, not at all. I wouldn't dare.
All right, eight forty-three, we come back.
All right, three minutes. So Mrs. Kraus, I was not trying to ice you.
Of course not.
Yes, he was. He told me, he texted me on break.
Let's see what we can do.
Okay, or is everybody coming back in or?
Looks like people are slowly coming back.
This is kind of like being the main speaker after lunch at a conference.
Or that three-minute break got everybody rejuvenated.
Ah, yes.
Oh. We did, I did a little Go Noodle, Wendy, while you guys were all getting a drink of water.
There you go.
Hey, Ms. Weaver, you have a question?
Uh, just looking at, in terms of logistics, are we trying to go through as much as we can, or is there like a?
I, I'm going to wait, and once Ms. Kraus is done with her presentations, I'm going to see where we're at. I don't know where we're at percentage-wise right now, but I, I'm going to take a look at it at that point.
No worries. Just was wondering if you wanted to how ambitious you wanted to be tonight, that's all.
Once Ms. Kraus finishes up, Dr. Fletcher, then um we have Maralena for Special Ed, and, and then uh Steve has a few, and Lou. So it may be a good time to break after Ms. Kraus, but I'll leave that to your discretion. We're, we're about a little more than halfway done, a little more than half, maybe sixty percent.
At this point?
Correct, at this point.
Very good. Okay. All right, so why don't we go ahead? We're going to resume our meeting now, and I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Good evening, everybody. The first one I'm going to report on is English, and that is your first red tab. And you will see on the left-hand page that our major goals of this program are to develop proficiency, confidence, influency, and because this is English, this encompasses reading, writing, listening, speaking, and viewing. The focus is to develop lifelong learning as well as the skills needed for work and enjoyment. You'll see that the program improvements include resources to improve options for student choice when selecting texts. That's been a big focus of the department, as well as to access audiobooks and digital texts to complement the print text. There are also supplies included in this budget such as barcodes and scanners um to ensure an inventory system to manage resources at the high school more efficiently. Sarah Wellin, the department coordinator, has done a great job, um really invested uh some really good thinking around this and inventoried all of their resources, and they've actually been able to barcode them and put them into Destiny, which is the program we use in the Library Media Center to track all of our resources. So that's really helping the department out with sharing resources and knowing what they have. An ongoing need will be to promote culturally responsive pedagogy in the classrooms and decreasing class sizes. So the total request for this program is just over ninety-four thousand dollars, which it does indicate a slight increase over last year, focused on those goals that we just discussed. You'll also see um that iXL is spread across the programs that Kristen shared, as well as English and math, which is the next one I'll talk about. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Ms. Yop?
Um, so one thing I heard you mention, and just clarify if I heard this correctly, is that they're looking to get audiobooks and print to complement the textbooks that they have?
Complement the so, the, the text selection, not necessarily a specific text.
So are these audiobooks in addition to what they already? So are these audiobooks in addition to what they already have? Do you think this is something that they necessarily need or maybe?
It is in addition to what they already have. So they already do have a collection of audio, audiobooks and digital texts. One of the goals of the department has been to expand the resources that we offer students. We talk about windows and mirrors and sliding doors a lot, so we're looking for a variety of texts that allow students to see themselves in their books. So just like we're expanding our print collection, we're also trying to expand the audiobooks and digital text available to students.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Oh, yes, Ms. Weaver.
Sorry, no, I didn't think I'd be the only one asking questions. I'm sorry. Um, could you, I mean, this is more for, I guess, Lou and Dr. Brummett, um, just so everyone can get more clarity on like because of what Kristen said about IXL, like everything broken up, can we get maybe like a total figure of that? And it's helpful to have it broken down. That's, that's super helpful. But just so we know how, because I know how massive this program is and how it's getting there. But maybe that might be helpful for others, maybe for myself. I'm the only one. But I know it's just getting split across, so maybe it's helpful to say like, this is comprehensively how much that program is and then how we split it amongst the departments, if that makes sense. And if that's even
For just the total amount of the contract.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know it off the top of my head, but
Not like right now, yeah.
Yeah. In bulk, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, Ms. Kraus, you can move on to the next one.
All right, we're going to look at math and that is your first pink tab. On the left-hand page, you'll see an overview where the major goals are outlined and the, they really encompass that idea for supporting each student in developing the skills and concepts to be proficient and confident. You'll see a focus on problem solving, communication, and application to real world situations, um, which is going to lead into one of the ASCS. Another focus is in math over this last two years has been to look at accelerating learning and the, the learning gaps that we're seeing. So, um, we do have some resources included in this budget for intervention materials as well. You'll see in the, under the program improvements that it includes use of illustrative math for grades five through eight. Illustrative math is a free curriculum resource. In grades six through eight, there's a companion program called Desmos that's being piloted in grade eight. We would like to look at expanding that to from grades six to eight. Desmos, um, really promotes an active student engagement. It's a digital lesson material, um, platform. It spurs complex vocabulary-rich discussions where students are collaborating and really deepening their understanding of complex problems. It brings a lot of topics together. We've seen it in action and the teachers are very excited about it. Desmos is only offered in grades six through eight, so you'll see a reference in grade five. They use a resource called LearnZillion that's used in place of Desmos. When the company catches up and moves it to grade five, they will certainly look at that being offered in grade five as well. So the ask in this, in this program is just over forty-nine thousand dollars. It's a very slight increase based on those programs, mostly contracted services that I just reviewed, um, as well as those intervention materials that we're looking at to continue to support students.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Yop.
Hi, um, so my question is this, with these programs that you'd like to implement, do you think they would, um, you know, increase maybe the scores? I know we, our math scores aren't you know, at an all-time high. Do you think maybe having these additional programs would help, you know, improve those scores? That's my question.
That, that is certainly the intention. Um, Sue Lejoy, who is our department coordinator, did a presentation for our plans committee when she requested this and she did lay out the data and exactly where she's seeing the need and she's been looking at Desmos in particular, she's trying to meet that need. So some of this is students' ability to articulate their thinking and to do that complex problem solving. So it, the level of rigor is, is, um, higher than just like a practice program that you see out there many times. So that's certainly the intention that it's going to prepare students, um, in a, in a good way, as well as providing teachers the resources to do this rigorous work that, that they're trying to do with students.
Um, Dr. Fletcher, if I may ask, uh, Dr. Brummett a question. If there's any way we can get a copy, if I or the board can get a copy of that presentation, I would love to see that. In regards to math, I know how important that is, um, you know, getting our scores up. So does anyone have a copy of that presentation that?
I actually have it open on my desktop right now. It, it was, uh, her plans proposals, what I was referring to, Dr. Brummett.
We can definitely share that, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that, looking at those, uh, scores. Sorry, my son's in the background. Um, yeah, this is something that I feel like is really important to the school system. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Ms. Pirati?
Thanks. Um, I'm just wondering why, um, in the contracted services, so all those math programs, there's, um, a number in bucket thirty, so administration, is that where? Cause I know like my daughter's in elementary school and she uses Reflex Math and she's used IXL in the past. So is that where, um, that cost is spread out through the elementary schools? Because it looks like there's only one elementary school listed as having money allocated for those services.
Yes, um, very good question. That money, you see in the oh-six account, that's Patterson and they use Reflex Math with some of their classrooms. That's what that account, that's what that one is for. In the thirty account, you're going to see the, um, resource called Dream Box that we use across the elementary schools for intervention. And because, um, when we buy a contract like that across the district, we'll put it in a thirty account like that. So that sixteen thousand is the Dream Box across all schools. Reflex Math is not used in every school. It's used specifically in that school in certain grade levels.
Okay, I'm not disagreeing with you. My, my daughter is in Anna Reynolds and she does use it this year.
Yeah, they got a grant. Some of the teachers got asked for a grant to, to, um, use that in that school. So it's not in the operating budget, but yes, they do have it.
Okay, no, that makes total sense. I understand the whole grant thing. Okay, so the, um, so whatever's in that thirty is going to be really for the other three elementary schools?
For all of them because it, Dream Box is actually an intervention program, but Reflex Math is used in tier one for all kids by, by those teachers that use it. Whereas, um, Dream Box is something we're using with intervention. Our, our math interventionists use it. Some classroom teachers have been piloting it with the whole class, but primarily what you're seeing in that thirty account is for the math interventionists across all schools.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that.
No problem.
Very good. Ms. Droste?
Um, is the Desmos that you were referring to, Wendy, in one of these contracted services?
Yes, it is.
And I, I guess I'm just going to sound really naive. I thought Desmos was free.
Illustrative math is free. Desmos has a cost to it. It's actually in the two middle schools and the ten and eleven accounts on five ninety-nine. In addition to, the LearnZillion is also in there. So that's not the entire cost.
Could they use the free version of Desmos? I know there's a free version. I use it all the time. So like, a- and this has been my thing here, like, is, is there a freer, cheaper? Like, obviously, the budget's tight. If we can save five dollars here, ten dollars there, that'd be great. Are the teachers using the paid version to the fullest extent? Or could they switch over to the free version?
And, and that is exactly what they were piloting now, so we will get more information as that goes. But, um, yes, they have used the free version, I believe. I, I don't know the difference between them myself off the top of my head. I couldn't tell you what more you get with the paid version. Um, but that would be information that I could provide to you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hut Wagner?
Thank you. I just wanted to inquire about the, um, regarding, um, the workbooks. Um, I know that we're that were cut, are those, just what would the implications be to cutting those workbooks? And additionally, are those workbooks? Um, I know like some programs, like in my school, one of the math programs we use, it has to be like that workbook, but um, is that something like there's a workbook that can be photocopyed and reproduced? Is it? Um, are there digital versions of it? Um, just wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, we, we do try to use digital versions whenever it's a workbook that we don't use a lot of the pieces to. Oftentimes, purchasing the BlackLine Masters can be, um, as costly as the workbook, workbooks. We're not permitted to copy workbooks and, and use the copying, um, unless we purchase the BlackLine Masters along with that. Uh, as far as the cut, that's an item that sometimes we have enough workbooks and that's something we always look at is inventory. In this case, we're looking to buy those ahead so that we already have them since the, the amount was few.
Very good. Any further questions? Okay, seeing no more questions, uh, we can move to the next item.
Okay, the next program is reading and that's going to be your second green tab. The major goal of the reading program is to provide a comprehensive reading curriculum and this includes the strands of print awareness, phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, fluency, and comprehension. You'll see that the program improvements include a pilot of a grade five reading course. This is something that um, I've been talking with the coaches at the secondary level about where, um, they'd like to see all students being able to go through um, a course almost like how they do with their encore right now, kind of cycle through it through the year. Um, it would help to really solidify some of those fluency and comprehension skills that we're still, still seeing a need in grade five. Typically, once they come out of the elementary level, there's less time in the core program for reading specifically and we're seeing a need to enhance that. So we're going to be trying that out. We're going to analyze that data to see if we can, um, replicate that program i- if we see that it is beneficial. And then, of course, the continued area of need is going to be on reading support and promoting culturally responsive pedagogy as we discussed earlier. You'll see in the line items, one of the, the, the two biggest asks in reading typically are the classroom books, library books at the elementary level, and, um, an overview of the intervention materials needed for the interventionist to continue to support students. So some of the requests that they have made include, um, more diverse books, but also books, um, at varying reading levels uh, to meet the needs of students as they, particularly when they get up into the higher levels. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Hut Wagner?
Uh, thank you so much. I wanted to just, um, ask, well, first of all, just wanted to say, I love that the, that fifth grade reading program. I think that's a great way um, to really target those skills before the students go on and, and those reading, um, possible deficiencies get bigger and bigger. Um, uh, looking at the, um, certified positions, how many of those teachers are like a tier-two interventionalist type position? Sorry. It's okay if you don't have it right now. I'm just wondering.
I can tell you that, um, staffing-wise, that we have two full-time reading interventionists right now at each elementary school and two at each middle school. And some of those are grant-funded.
And then, um, are there any that are funded by, um, the, the COVID relief money? Any reading interventions that are funded by that?
Yes, we do have one, we, we, last year we had three reading interventions at the middle level and one of them was split between the two middle schools. And with the, um, ESSR funds, we were able to have two full-time in each building. So one of those interventionists is paid with the ESSR funds.
And do those positions, they will expire potentially, or the money for them, um, within the next two years?
Two years after this one. It's a three-year grant.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Okay, Ms. Weaver?
Yeah, um, I just want to maybe just for clarification for public and, and kind of piggybacking off of what Ms. Hut Wagner said, I think like, could you explain the difference between the reading versus uh, the reading intervention versus like English language and how that differentiates? Because there's like forty-three certified positions, forty-three point five-two, and how that differentiates from our English language, uh, not the English language learners, but our English, uh, certified positions. And if there is difference.
You're, you're talking program-wise or staffing-wise? Are you thinking of how the staff is split between those two programs? Okay. So Lou, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the elementary teachers are split across the five core areas that are, include reading, right? They're included in the reading budget. Um, our secondary staff, he's nodding his head, I think I'm on the right track. High school staff are in, are in the English department. So the, if you go to the English tab, you're going to find our secondary English teachers.
Okay, I just wanted to, to clarify that because I know there's like, um, and then the ones at the high school would be reading interventionists, not English teachers. Just so people are clear, correct?
The, the, the teachers at the high school are in the English department.
Correct, and not. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if, the reading interventionists are all included in the reading budget.
Perfect. All right. I just wanted to clarify so people know, like, why is there tons of positions in both? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Yop.
Hi, I have a question for, um, Lou, if that's okay, uh, Dr. Fletcher.
Yes, please.
So I'm looking at the salaries, the certified salaries. Can you explain to me now, I, um, it says like two, four, or five, how many, um, people in each school are under these salaries? Cause I'm looking at five hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, I mean.
One second. Can we go on? I have to look it up on my other computer here. It'll take me a minute or two to get that and I'll get right back.
Would you like me to go on, Dr. Fletcher, to the next one and we'll come back to that staffing question?
Sure.
Okay, so the next program is curriculum and assessment and that is your third gray tab. The goals of the curriculum and assessment program are focus on ensuring a well-articulated curriculum throughout a student's journey in our school district. There's a focus on assessing the growth of individual students, grade levels, and subgroups in order to evaluate the effectiveness of our programs and make revisions as necessary. And that is the department that Kristen and I oversee, um, that the vast majority of that work in collaboration with our department coordinators and our coaches. You'll see that the request, uh, for this budget is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That includes the purchase of Power School. That is the biggest item in this. Power School, as you know, is our, our management system and that is in the five ninety-nine contracted, contracted services. It also includes a plugin for our progress reports so that we can do our progress reports and parents can access them through Power School. That was a switch we made a couple of years ago. And then the other items have to do with materials for curriculum writing and in the salaries, you'll see how we, um, pay staff to do the curriculum writing in addition to their, um, regularly scheduled jobs. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Droste?
Okay, I don't, I, I don't want to sound like we're underneath curriculum and assessment, right? I'm in the right tab.
You are.
Okay, good. I'm confused, very confused. So unless it's the way that it printed, it looks like there's no certified positions. There's two non-certified positions, but then under salaries, there's certified salaries. Is it just because there's no, like, it's only through central office that there's certified salaries? I'm confused.
Yeah, I'll see it when Lou's done with that one. I see where you are, Danielle. We're in the one-eleven account.
Yeah.
I'm guessing that that's a part of my salary and Kristen's salary and it's not listed up above.
Okay.
The non-certified positions are, are, um, parts of our data specialist in there, I believe, but I'll have Lou respond to that.
I can respond. That's the allotment you have for, uh, all the curriculum writing and special tasks that are
Oh, right, okay.
Right, so there's no FT associated with it.
Correct, so Danielle, that, that's what I was referring to when I said that curriculum. Correct, so Danielle, that's what I was referring to when I said that curriculum writing that teachers do. We pay an hourly rate for that, so that is the money we have budgeted for that. So that comes under salaries, even though there's not an FTE associated.
I can respond to the other question from before now, too, if you want me to jump in.
Can we finish with my, that one question, Lou? The certified, under salaries, the certified 111, 30 is for curriculum rating. And then what's the non, is the non-certified salaries, what is that?
That's for the Power School Specialist and the Data Analyst.
Okay, thank you. Now you can, now you can answer Ms. Yop's question. Thank you.
Okay, I recall the question specifically. Everyone wanted to know what, how many FTEs were part of the reallocation for teachers that are spread across the five big programs. The ratios that are used at the elementary level is there's 20% of a teacher's salary goes to language arts, math, and social studies. 25% to reading, 15% to science. At the middle school, it's 22% for four of the five programs, with science being the only one that's at 12%. So with that being the allocation split, this, for the 22, 23 budget we're looking at, the, excuse me, the elementary reallocation for language arts is 14.2. The middle school reallocation is 12.87. For math, it's the same, 14.2, 12.87. Reading at the elementary level, 17.75, 7.02%. 7.02 FTE at the middle school. Science is 10.65. Elementary, 12.87 at middle school. And back to the 14.2 and 12.87 for social studies. So in total, that is, how many positions we have here? About 71 positions, if I counted correctly, that are on a split.
Thank you so much.
That sounds correct with the number of elementary classroom teachers, Lou.
Okay, we seem to have a delay in Ms. Kraus's audio here.
Oh, am I back now?
I can hear you.
Okay, do I want me to go on to media library services?
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, that is the third brown tab. It's your very next tab. And on the left-hand page, you'll see the major goals of this program are focusing on appreciation and enjoyment of literature. There's also a focus on ethical and safe use of sources and use of technology. Program improvements are really focused on increasing diversity of book collections, replacing aged materials, and expanding access to digital collections. Sarah Whalen oversees the library media program in combination with the English program that I spoke to earlier, so you can see where that is paralleling, how she's providing resources to different schools. And you can see the total request is a little over $97,000. And that includes the request not only for the library books, but also periodicals that we keep in the library each year. And much of that, if you look under 599, are the contracted services that we use to manage our library collection, such as Destiny that I spoke to earlier. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from anyone? Okay, doesn't seem that we have any questions. Okay, Ms. Yop.
I just have one request. I know you guys asked a question, but it's a lot to look at. Is it, is it okay if we have like 30 seconds in between us asking questions? Just because sometimes it's hard to, I don't know, take notes and look at the numbers at the same time? If that's okay? I don't know if that's a.
So you want me to hold off a little bit before we ask questions?
Yeah, if that's okay.
No, that's fine.
Notes and look at the numbers, and it's a lot, and I don't know if it's just for, I just want to make sure we all.
And if I may jump in on that topic, Ms. Yop, if folks, I'm going to review all the questions that were posed tonight that we haven't yet answered. They were follow-up questions. And to that point, as board members look at the documents over the, you know, tonight, if you have any more energy, or tomorrow, you can send questions maybe to Dr. Fletcher, and he can forward them to me for, you know, inclusion in our responses tomorrow night or the following week. You know, we will get back to folks, even if the question arises after the meeting.
Thank you so much. That's perfect.
Okay, Ms. Weaver.
Sure, I'm you. Wendy, could you go over what the line item is for, assuming it's in one middle school? It looks like it's. In Kellogg, that's 24,000? It's on the back page.
Jessica, I only caught the end of that when you turned away from the mic.
Sorry, I'm like this budget book. There's no way to fit all of this on here. The line item, it's in 642 under library books. I'm just wondering if it's specifically for, it's the 24,000 for Kellogg, it looks like? Just wondering if there's like a difference between Kellogg and Wallace for that?
Yes, there is. And the reason you see that up and down sometimes is because they do a weeding of their library on a regular basis, and sometimes because the building principal is balancing their budget differently, they might get smaller amounts for a few years and then have a big need to weed the library. And that's what you're seeing there, is a big ask there for replenishing, and there was just a need there, and the principal was able to accommodate that request.
No worries, just know if Ms. Kucha was in trouble.
She's probably very busy over there.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? And I'll try not to hurry. Okay, there don't seem to be any more questions. So do you want to have another presentation, Ms. Kraus?
That is it for me, and you were all hoping that I would say that, since there was a possibility of being done after me, right?
Well, there is the possibility. I think it would be a good time right now to stop. I would have liked to have heard the special education presentation tonight, but in consideration of that being one of our largest departments financially, I would like to have a little bit of time tomorrow night, just in case there are several questions for that. So if there are no objections, we will stop this part of it for tonight, and we will pick off where we are leaving, pick up where we're leaving off right now. Okay? That way, our minds can absorb a whole lot better. I have a saying that I use frequently, because I can get long-winded teaching, is that the mind can only absorb as much as the seat can endure. All right. So with that, what I'm going to do at this point is I am going to go back to our agenda, item D. We're going to open it up right now for public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. And we limit your participation to three minutes. We ask that you state your name and the street that you reside on. And also, just to remind you that any questions asked tonight, we will attempt to answer them as soon as possible. We don't typically engage in conversation during public participation, or we don't try to answer them, the questions immediately. And with that said, is there anyone from the public that wishes to make a statement or ask a question? Apparently, the public is tired as well. Okay. So at this time, I will open it up for any further remarks from the board members. If you wish to speak, we'll give you that opportunity right now. And Ms. Weaver?
I just want to say, good first budget night. Wanted to especially thank Ms. Kraus for bringing up that, maybe a free option or something. I appreciated that perspective. Didn't know that was the thing, so it really helps to have some teachers around during this process. And I just want to keep encouraging everyone else to ask questions as well, so we can, we can get down to it. Because I think, one, I don't want to hear my voice all the time and be on the wrong section, because I learned that tonight, that I could be. But it's really helpful for us to all get each other's perspective and get down to what's in the budget. So I think, you know, I appreciate everyone as well that put in the time, our administrators and all of our department heads that put this together. I know the budget book is never easy, so it's always helpful. They take time out to present to us and let us handle the questions. So yeah, just looking forward to tomorrow night, and appreciate our chair for selecting a reasonable, I think this is actually the earliest we got out, so just want to say thank you and look forward to tomorrow's second half of the budget. Thank you.
Less than half.
Yes, apologies.
No, no, that's fine. It's exciting. It is. I want to say as well that the presentations tonight were very well-done, very professional. You've cleared a lot of things up for us, and I really do appreciate that. So I thank each and every one of you for your participation. And I'm looking forward to reconvening tomorrow night and working through the rest of this budget, and then rolling up our sleeves. So if there were no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, say hello, good night.
Hello, good night.
Hello, good night.
Hello, good night. Thank you, everybody.
Good job, Danielle.
Good night.
Good night.